To order. Thank you so much for joining us. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
We have three board members here attending the meeting today in person. Boa Price and Mike Kerschner is on the phone. He's attending virtually. Board member Leda Spanenberg is not attending meeting tonight.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? And will our young artists please start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we begin our meeting, we will start by presentation of our young artist award winners. We are breaking these presentations into three groups in order to allow for adequate distancing. We'd love to welcome our first group here tonight. Congratulations, every one of you. I would now like to turn the time over to Dr. Amy Dudley.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this time. This is such a fun event that we have and we get to celebrate three times over. As Mrs. Browning mentioned, we're breaking this up to make sure we do social distancing. So this evening I get to present our first five young artists for this half year. And the work behind us is the work of our young artists. And we are so fortunate to have it in our boardroom for the next six months before we turn it over to some new young artists. So when I call you up, I'll call your name and I will present you a certificate. And then we'll pause so that Mrs. Bauer can get a picture of you. And also if your parents would like to get a picture of you as well. We'll do that for individual pictures since we don't want to do the group pictures for social distancing. Before I recognize our young artists, I know we have several of our art teachers here that work tirelessly with our young artists to really help them to work on their creativity and who create some great works of art. Not only the art behind us, but then in our schools, our schools are decorated with the work of our young artists. So thank you to our art teachers that are here tonight and for our teachers that could not make it. Let's first give a round of applause. So now to the presentation of our young artists. Our first young artist is Addison Hink. She's a fourth grade student from Carmel Elementary. Addison. Congratulations, Addison. Our next young artist is Annabel Droste. She is a fifth grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary. Our next young artist is Mia Pageant. Mia is a fourth grade student at Orchard Park. Our next young artist is a fourth grade student at Smoky Row, Malina Hilarde. Our last young artist being recognized this evening was not able to make it. Her name is Hillary Lee and she's a sixth grade student from Carmel Middle School. Congratulations to all of our young artists. Thank you, parents, for coming to see your children receive this award.
Hey, if I could just throw in a couple of kudos and shout outs to you young artists because we love having your pictures here in the PMR. A lot of people come into this room and have meetings all the time and they always look at your pictures and compliment us on how great they look. And I also heard that if you put a black light on some of those pictures, that they really pop out. So I'm warning everybody, I may be here and turn off the lights with the black light. Don't be alarmed. I just want to check out the art. So thank you so much for sharing your talents with us.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We do invite you to stay for our workshop topic tonight on diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we do understand it's a school night. So we will take a moment to pause if anyone is going to be leaving at this time. Thank you. We will now move on to approving the following items in consent. Personnel report, claims, and payroll. May I please have a motion to approve these consent items? Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Let the record reflect four in favor and zero opposed. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our workshop topic and we'll over diversity, equity, and inclusion and invite Mr. David Woodward and Mrs. Stephanie Whiteside to the podium. And Mrs. Dr. Dudley.
Good evening again, and I'm going to go ahead and start us off. So this evening, we are excited to present information about our continuous improvement efforts to ensure educational equity. We'll share where we've been and where we are going. And as you will see from the group of individuals presenting, we're working toward educational equity from all different angles and engaging in the work with a variety of different departments and personnel. So now, before I begin, I will introduce my fellow presenters in their order of appearance after me. So we first have Mrs. Anna Rorio, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. You want to give a wave? We have Mr. David Woodward, Director of Student Services. Mrs. Stephanie Whiteside, Mental Health Coordinator. Mrs. Betsy Howard, Supervisor of Learning. Mrs. Allison Martin, Clay Middle School Language Arts Teacher. And Dr. Tom O'Stryke, our Assistant Superintendent of Staff and Student Services. So this evening, as I shared, we will be sharing our journey back from 2016 to the present and share with you what we have been working on and then where we're going. This is, we do have a lot of work to do in this area and this is that continuous improvement effort that we talked about. So on the first couple of slides, the timeline shows several explicit actions and steps on our continuous improvement journey. And each person this evening presenting will share highlights of some of these specific different actions. So we'll start with the journey in 2016. And during the 2016-17 school year, the administrators engaged in a book study that was entitled, "Leadership for Increasingly Diverse Schools." This helped to sharpen our awareness of how multiple dimensions of diversity intersect as well as develop strategies for working with the students of all socioeconomic statuses, races, religions, sexual orientations, languages, and special needs. The book study helped to build our capacity of our administrators in creating learning environments that promote educational equity and excellence for all students. And as you can see on the slide, what we mean by educational equity is when the educational practices, the policies, the curricula, resources, and school cultures are representative of all of our students. And each student has the access to participate and make progress in high-quality learning experiences, regardless of his or her race, socioeconomic status, gender, ability, religion, affiliation, national origin, linguistic diversity, or other characteristics. And that is our goal. And as I said, this work is, has been a long process and we will continue that process and that educational equity. So during the 2019-20 school year, this last year, we started with a small group of administrators that began engaging in the collaborative process focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this collaborative inquiry process acts as a bridge between the data, because we are very data-rich in our district, and works from the data to the results. We know that we need to improve in this area in providing educational equity for all of our students, but where do we start? And this collaborative inquiry process will help us to understand where we need to start on that. And so we started with, in the process, you work with the foundation. You build that foundation. You really look at what is happening. What does your demographics look like in your corporation? So we looked at our student demographics. We looked at our staff demographics as well. We looked at perceptual data. We also looked at our achievement data, our discipline data, and building that foundation. And we were poised, our group was poised to start working on, we analyzed that data and then start looking at our potential areas that we need to work on and then verifying those causes before we went to the solutions. However, unfortunately, as you know, something happened last March called the pandemic. And at the time, we were sidelined from this work. But this is certainly work that we will continue to work on in our pursuit of excellence in that educational equity as we work through this process. Because this truly does give us a way to bridge that data and then those next steps in looking at those solutions. So at another professional learning opportunity we had during the 2019-20 school year, our administrators also studied the book, "Identity-Safe Classrooms." And identity-safe classrooms are those in which teachers strive to ensure students that their social identities are an asset rather than a barrier to success in the classrooms. And acknowledging students' identities can build the foundation for strong, positive relationships. This coupled with the challenging opportunities to learn can help all students begin to feel they are welcomed, supported, and valued as members of the learning community. Reading this book helped us to think about how our everyday practice influences students from diverse backgrounds and how we may want to change some of our current practices. And some of these identity-safe practices include child-centered teaching that is characterized by classroom autonomy, listening for students' voices, teaching for understanding, and the focus on cooperation. Also cultivating diversity as a resource that is characterized by diversity as a resource for teaching, challenging curriculum, and high expectations and academic rigor. Classroom relationships characterized by teacher warmth, teacher availability to support learning, and positive student relationships. And caring environments characterized by emotional and physical comfort, which is promoted by the teacher's skill and attention to pro-social development. During the second semester of this school year, many of our elementary schools are using this book with their teachers and engaging in a book study to really study this in further depth in those identity-safe classrooms and creating those. And Mrs. Rorio will share some additional actions as we continue on this journey.
Okay, so one area where we've had a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion with our teachers is through the work with our English language learners. In the past few years, we've had some bigger shifts in our ENL population, not only with the increase in the amount of English language learners, but also in those diversity of the languages and cultures of the students in which we serve. So we called upon our National Consortium, WEADA, and asked for a trainer in about 2016-17 school year. Said, "Do you have a specialist who could come help us? Come up with strategies and tools and skills to help meet the needs of our English language learners." So she said, "Great. We're going to send somebody." We had Tammy King come. And, you know, we expected to first start our work with, "Here's some great tools and strategies you can use." And she said, "Back up the bus. We're going to start first with cultural competency." So if you don't understand your own cultures and your own biases that you bring to the table when you work with children from other cultures, you're probably not going to get very far with those tools and techniques. So one of the areas that she talked about with us is this idea of the cultural iceberg. So we often like to first start with things that are easy, right? We like to say we appreciate festivals and foods and cultures. But it's the things that are deeper, those deeper cultural biases or cultural pieces that we bring to the table that often become those barriers for our students if we're not in understanding of how they, the culture that they bring to the table as well. Through this training, though, we learned that to become culturally competent educators, we must learn more, confront our own racism and biases, and see reality from different perspectives. Another area where diversity, equity, and inclusion has been alive and well is in our program evaluation recommendation process. So as you know, Carmel Clay Schools goes through a regular cycle of program evaluation to ensure our programs are up to date with the most current trends in educational research and meets the needs of all of our students. We look to where we have qualitative and quantitative data along with our literature review, excuse me, to help identify areas where we're excelling, but also where we have gaps. One area where we found a large gap was in our ELA representation of diverse voices in the text that we select and the district for all of our students to read. This gap analysis led us to the following recommendation that you can read here. So the key components to this recommendation speaks to first, making sure that we're selecting texts that are inclusive, that they act as mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors, but also includes providing professional development on culturally responsive teaching practices. We're getting ready now to move into our social studies program evaluation as well as world language. And this idea of and concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion will be threaded all the way through that process. Okay. And I'm going to pass it off to David Woodward, who's going to talk about our strategic plan.
So it takes us up to our current process. So in June of 2019, the administrative team presented to the school board the first draft of our three-year strategic plan. And we did that at what most people would call a summer retreat. But as Dr. Beresford says, we don't retreat at Carmel Clay Schools, so it's a summer advance. So at our summer advance, we discussed the three-year strategic plan, which is available on our website. But there were specific areas of that that were related, specific to diversity and equity. Within student learning, we identified that we wanted to ensure identity-safe environments that support student success. Within student supports, we identified that we want to ensure all students experience a safe and supportive environment that's responsive to the needs of each student. And within employee growth and satisfaction, we identified that we want to recruit, hire, develop a diverse and premier workforce. So how do we do that? So we put together an action plan with these strategic goals. And so we pretty much started with professional development to enhance our knowledge base related to diversity and equity. And then with regards to employee recruitment, our HR staff has worked very closely with our community liaison coordinator to create appropriate marketing tools to bring in a diverse staff. And you're going to learn a little bit more about a very specific position that we're using that for now. So as we're moving forward with our action plans based on the strategic plan, we realized we have a lot of new faces. Dr. Beresford, at that point, had been here for about one year. I, as Director of Student Services, was just finishing my first year. And Stephanie Whiteside, our Coordinator of Mental Health, had just been hired. So with new faces, in a school corp this size, we felt, okay, where are we? We need to find out exactly where we are with regards to diversity and equity. And so we did some investigation.
When we started our investigation, we said we really wanted to take a look at, you know, where have we been? What are schools already doing across our district? So one of the things that we looked at first with our teammates, we looked at clubs that celebrated identity, where places that celebrated diversity, and then also had a cultural impact as well through their clubs. And so we saw last year, we had about 13 clubs that...
Yeah. Yes. So we saw last year, we had about 13 clubs. However, this year we have about 20 clubs. So we have definitely increased that. But starting off, we didn't see a whole lot of clubs, but we did see a few there. We also saw that some of our schools had done international fairs, which had different types of food, fashion. And also, we're just more about learning about other cultures. We also saw that a couple of our schools did diversity parent panels, where parents were able to interact with one another and just talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also saw that we had many principals and teachers that were very interested and wanted to get credentialing in equity and inclusion. And so many of them had started out on an independent study on their own, just learning about different techniques, looking at building culture and building climate, and starting to do that work independently. We also saw that some schools had some book studies going on where they were reading different books on just how they can improve the culture of the school and how they could focus more on equity and inclusion throughout the school and with staff. And then we also saw that some of our staff, they were doing SEL activities. And we've been, for the last few years, doing different professional development, doing different activities, explicit and implicit instruction around SEL. Now, I will say, I hesitated to put that on there because, as we know historically with SEL, it hasn't necessarily had a diverse lens or focus. Many times, we've seen that within the text, there are, the cultural perspective has been left out. And so that is one thing that we are starting to look at through our SEL teams in ensuring that we are actually looking at that through a lens of equity and inclusion.
So as we continue our investigation to learn more about where are we as a district, we felt we wanted to hear from parents. So we invited a group of parents in to meet with myself, Stephanie, Dr. Beresford, and we wanted to hear about their experiences. We wanted them to educate us about living in Carmel and raising their kids in this school district. So we selected a diverse group of parents representing students with racial diversity, with gender diversity, religious diversity, and diversity in their abilities, both physical and academic. And each of these parents shared with us their experiences of raising children in our district. And we asked their opinions. What would be an appropriate strategy moving forward? And what really struck me that, from that meeting, and I'm going to paraphrase, but what was said to us was, "Don't invite us in. We've been here before in different areas." "Don't invite us in and have the conversation and then do nothing." And that stuck with us. And so our goal as we moved forward, we needed to do the best intentions to do something. And so what would that look like? And what have other school corporations done, both locally and nationally?
So just like David said, we really set out to look at who has done this work and who has implemented these initiatives successfully. So we've talked to our neighbors, so HSC, which has a position dedicated to equity and inclusion. We even went to Noblesville, where they send many of their staff members through the Racial Equity Institute. We talked with Washington Township. We also went down to IPS and talked with Dr. Patricia Payne, which was phenomenal. She is a wonderful lady and an expert in equity and inclusion. And we were able to learn about professional development opportunities, policy opportunities, and really look at their journey in IPS since they've been doing this for well over 20 years. And then we've also consulted with Dr. Renee Aziz, which that is a name we'll probably hear more of because she has definitely been integral in our different initiatives and then also our studies here. And then we've also seen through this last year, many opportunities for that professional development as I was talking about. So one opportunity that recently presented itself is, the Carmel Education Foundation did award grants for up to 10 educators to attend Interrupting Racism for Children. So we were able to send principals and educators there for that intensive seminar. We also recently attended the Racial Equity Institute through IPS, which was an invitation through Dr. Payne. So myself, Dr. Beresford, Dr. O'Stryke, and Leila Spanenberg were able to attend that. And that was two-day intensive seminar where we have additional work that we do afterwards. And then we also have started a virtual seminar with our social workers and our counselors through IUPUI, where we're able to look at school counseling practices and strategies for supporting our students and their mental health through our roles as social workers and counselors. All right. And I would like to introduce Betsy Howard.
Good evening. It's nice to be here tonight. My part of this journey starts last spring when Dr. Dudley secured an opportunity that the DOE was offering in partnership with IU School of Education at IUPUI for professional development for schools. And we were lucky enough to secure a spot in both their equity strand and their pedagogy strand. And they both started last summer simultaneously. The equity strand is this team of six administrators throughout the district. We have one from each level, so an elementary, a middle, a high school principal, and then three administrators from the central office. And we have been meeting since last summer with IUPUI and this team to go over equity. So first, it was just an education for us, kind of historically, looking back through educational practices over time. And we've covered many topics, some of which are on the slide. It's been a great opportunity. We've received some tools that we can use here at Carmel Clay Schools. Our part, our classwork ended with a small equity audit that we did as a six-member team. That tool we have available to us, which we can use at the building level if we choose to. So that's something we have in our toolkit. We also received a great package of resources for equity inclusion that we have available. And then they're getting ready to share with us another tool that will help us learn how to establish like an equity team at an individual building and not just establish it, but how do you keep it and sustain it and keep it going? So that's something we have to look forward to from that strand. And then at the same time, at the high school, we have a group of instructional coaches and myself working on this pedagogy strand, which deals with teaching methods and strategies. And again, the very initial meetings were very laying the foundations. So a lot of theory, a lot of research, and a lot of work, learning about the history in the United States and where we've come and where we're headed. And then the plan is that this is a train-the-trainer model. So our coaches have the ability to work with their department chairs, who then have the ability to work with their teachers in their department. And over time, as we grow this work forward, this is actually a two-year commitment. We will see this work grow in the high school. But it's been a great opportunity and it's been a pleasure to be on both groups and really kind of grow my own knowledge and my own experience. And then this summer, they will have two additional opportunities if everything goes according to plan. But as we know, in the current climate, that things can change and they may not be able to do this. But the next two strands would be curriculum and then one for family, community, and school. So it'd be great if we can continue working this forward and I'm excited to be a part of that. And then the next slide I'm going to share with you has to do with our District Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Planning Team. So Dr. Dudley referred to earlier... So Dr. Dudley referred to earlier, a smaller committee that started last year, and Dr. Beresford has grown that work forward this year into a larger group of 23 stakeholders in the district and the building level. We have SROs, we have school counselors, we have teachers, we have administrators. It's been, you know, it's a nice group, very, I think it cast a nice broad net to get people who know what's happening in the building at different levels. On our last meeting, we did a macro view of looking at data for, I would call it, it was like a snapshot, so it kept the conversation going, and then it generated a lot of questions. And so both Dr. Beresford and Dr. Dudley spent time kind of digging into those questions and getting people to talk, and so that we can now take that information and go do a deeper data dive, and then bring that information back to the committee and look at, you know, look at the systems. As Dr. Dudley referred to that process earlier, it's a really important part of the work that we're going to do. We always want to be driven by the data, looking at it, responding to it, and then making adjustments, and it's like an iterative process. And we make some tweaks, and we collect data and information and feedback again, and then we assess over time. So it's ongoing, and it's been an exciting process, and Dr. Beresford has been leading that, and it's been pretty awesome, so nice there. And then next up is going to be Allison to talk about our teacher council.
Hi, I'm Allison Martin, and I teach eighth-grade language arts at Clay Middle School. So thanks for letting me share about our advisory council. I also need to say Alvin Anthony is the chair of this council, and he unfortunately was last minute unable to be here. And I would love if he were here, because then I would make him do more of the talking. So he's a wonderful part of our group. He's an eighth-grade teacher of language arts also at Carmel Middle School. So since I'm an English teacher, I'm going to tell my story, right? Because we all have to tell stories as English teachers. Growing up, I've always had a heart for justice, for equity. And if you're an Enneagram fan, if there's any of those in here, I don't know if I'm a one or an eight, because I feel like they're very similar in my mind. But both of them have a justice lens and a desire to see right be done, and that is very much in line with me. But I would say it's really only been the last four years or so that I've been able to get the knowledge acquired. So I've had it in my heart, but it's a lot gone to my head now, learning about more of the racial inequities that have been a reality for people their entire lives, and learning about how do we bring that equity into our schools as well. So I've been reading, listening, studying, trying to catch up, and all of this with the goal in mind to, how can I serve my students the best? How can I love my students well and teach them the most effectively? So two experiences, I think, have been the most influential for putting me where I'm standing right at this moment. And one of those was, in 2018, a social studies teacher at Clay, Leanna Giles, and I started planning a civil rights trip, and we wanted to be able to go down south and visit a lot of museums, memorials, and sites, and really learn in depth about our nation's history. And thanks to a grant from the Hamilton County and Central Indiana Community Foundations, we were able to go for a week at spring break to Nashville, Birmingham, Montgomery, Selma, and Memphis. And it was an extremely powerful trip that I would love every person in this room and in our school to be able to take, because it was really a life-changing experience. It learned a lot, filled a lot of gaps in history for me. It caused a lot of lamenting just where our country has been, and it also connected a lot of dots to see where we are today and where some of those lingering effects still are. Another experience was last fall, Leanna and I, thanks to those same grants, were able to attend the Interrupting Racism for Children two-day workshop, which was also extremely powerful and really challenged us to think about, how are we as teachers in the classroom really meeting the needs of all of our students? And how can we do that more effectively? Where can we use our opportunities to really bring equity into our classrooms? So throughout most of last school year, Leanna and I and others in our building really began and then joined in a lot of the conversations that were happening here. We had ideas for how we could address equity, diversity. We had things that we were starting and talked with people who were in this room, and then, of course, COVID happened, and that seemed to throw a lot of the brakes on things. We were concerned, how long will this pause happen within our buildings and our districts? Is this going to be something long-term or shorter? But I think what many of us learned through COVID was that, in spite of being separate, there was a lot of community that came out of it, and just the value of connections and conversations, which we weren't losing those, and that was really exciting. Because over the summer, a lot of us at Clay and other middle schools got connected, and then to other teachers, and the more we were able to just have conversations with each other, share ideas and dreams for our district, we got really encouraged by what that could look like. And even Dr. Beresford joined us for lunch one day, and we were really, I think, looking forward to what this fall could hold for us. So our conversations, like I said, focused on a lot of our goals, our hopes for equity for our students, because we, as teachers, obviously, and everyone in this room, we love our students, we're committed to this district, and we're committed to our community. And thankfully, we've seen through this, a lot of great things that are happening that many of us have wanted for a long time. And one of those that I'm excited to be part of is the DEI Advisory Council. So we consist, as it says here, of 20 members. We represent elementary, middle, and high school. We cover a wide range of grades and departments and different interests in each building. And even though the story of how I got here is going to be different from all of the people there, we're all united by that same goal, which is, how can we best bring equity to our students? Our focus is really this, is truly to support our staff, our students, and the parents in this district, and to make sure that we are able to facilitate growth and development in these areas of equity and inclusion. We have met once already, and we meet again next week, and I know all of us who are part of this group are really humbled and honored to be part of it and to look for more ways that we can work together, bring opportunities, bring encouragement, and also bring some challenges to our school district and see what we can really do to make a difference in the future. So that's where we are with our council, and thanks for letting me share a little bit about that tonight.
Thank you very much, Allison. As you can see, the district is moving in a positive direction. However, this work cannot stop. It needs to continue. We need to go deeper, we need to go wider, and we need to continue with the work and the focus that you've heard here this evening. Through the leadership of Dr. Beresford, our superintendent, through the leadership of our school board, we have posted a diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator to help lead these efforts in with Carmel Clay Schools. This does not mean that it is the sole person that's responsible for this work. This work takes us all, and it takes everybody working together to continue to create identity-safe classrooms for all of our students here in Carmel. And so as you can see, we were very fortunate. We received over 100 applicants for this position. We are holding interviews on Wednesday. We've done screenings, and we bring in some of our first-level candidates to interview. We've put together a great interview committee. We are working in conjunction with Dr. Renee Aziz with Virtuoso Education, who I consider one of the top leaders in diversity, equity, and inclusion in education in the state of Indiana, so we're very fortunate to have her. Additionally, the week after, we're going to be holding finalist interviews, and then it'll be our goal to make a recommendation to our Carmel Clay Schools' school board at the November 23rd, or maybe more realistically, with checking references and maybe bringing in another level of interviews, depending how they go, a recommendation on December 14th, with the goal of having this new position within Carmel Clay Schools start on January 4th. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Michael Beresford, our superintendent, to continue to tell the diversity, equity, and inclusion story here in Carmel.
I don't think there's much I can add to that story. I really appreciate everybody's work in this presentation workshop. You did a really fine job. Talked very early that, you know, when there's a systemic problem, it requires a systemic solution. And a long time ago, seems like a long time ago, I had a board member at the district I was working in, and we were talking about it for quite a while, about achievement gaps. And he said to me, you know, Dr. Beresford, I don't think we have an achievement gap, we have an engagement gap. And, you know, sometimes when someone tells you something, and it just kind of sticks in your craw. And I kept thinking that over and over again, engagement gap, engagement gap. And we had engaged in some, you know, a lot of equity inclusion work, and part of that just kind of crystallized it. You know, what kind of work can we do to make sure every kid in our district is engaged and valued? And is that a missing piece that we have to find out what's going on? What can we do about it? So then when you go to change theory, you know, a lot of people, you know, I was a school counselor, and a lot of that was, my training in school counseling was, you know, some therapists think that you have to change the thoughts of someone for them to change, and some people think that you have to change the heart or the emotions for someone to change. Some therapists believe that you just have to change behavior. If you change the behavior, then the thoughts and the heart will come along. But I think it's probably a mix of all those things. But when you get down to what exactly are we trying to do, is we're trying to make sure that every classroom in Carmel Clay Schools is identity-safe, and what do we need to do about that? And so as you can see tonight, we've done a lot of different layers, because it is a multi-layered thing. And you heard a lot of information about building knowledge, building knowledge and building knowledge, because you do have to have a baseline of knowledge to understand, how do these systems exist? How do they happen? And also, you heard the word tools quite a bit. You know, we have to have some tools to work with and some ways to find understanding. And I would probably add confidence. You know, once you have knowledge and tools, you have to build confidence to be able to, you know, to feel confident in what you do. So where do we go from there? And this is not what I'd call a fast process, and I'll give you the example that I heard from a pretty good expert I follow. And he said, well, you know, if you're wanting to teach somebody how to shoot a free throw, he goes, what do you do? He goes, well, first off, you should have a long conversation about how you shoot a free throw. He said, well, then, you should go to some conferences and learn about, you know, shooting, and, you know, learn all about, you know, the history of shooting free throws, and what's the proper, you know, angles and things to shoot a free throw. And he said, then, you should read a lot of books. Read a lot of books about free throws, and the more books you read about free throws, then obviously you'll be better at free throw shooting, that sort of thing. He said, another thing you do is watch, you know, watch videos, watch videos about free throw shooting, watch people shoot free throws, a whole lot of free throws. And I think now in 2020, it would probably be, you know, you need to get on a Zoom meeting, you know, and get on a Zoom meeting with some really good free throw shooters and really have conversations about that. Well, we all, when you look at that example, you think, well, that's ridiculous. If you want to get better at shooting free throws, you need to shoot, and you need to have a coach beside you, alongside you, shoulder to shoulder, and helping you, you know, work on your skills and your talents. And at the end of the day, this guy said, you know, really, coaching is the key, you know, to really making a move, to moving that needle, and getting people to have, use their knowledge, use their tools, and have the confidence, you know, to make a big difference. So, and really, in our equity inclusion work, that's what we want. And what you've seen tonight is really a foundation of a multi-layered approach to trying to make sure every classroom in Carmel Clay Schools is an identity-safe place, where a kid feels valued, where a kid feels known, where a kid is appropriately challenged, and that it's a place that's home away from home. So, so anyhow, I really appreciate everybody's work tonight. And with that, we'll conclude the workshop, and we'll take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford, and all those who presented. Any questions from the board? We'll start at the end with Pam.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. I really enjoyed it, very informative. I'm glad to see that we are moving in the direction that we are moving, and that we will have a coordinator soon. I do have a couple of questions regarding employee development. How does, and I know part of the presentation talked about some of this, but how does this filter down into our staff? And how are we going to go about diversifying our staff? That's one question. Do you want me to go through all my questions, or just one at a time?
Let's just do one at a time.
So as you're talking about the professional development of how do we make sure that we work with all of our teachers, all of our staff members, as well as our administrators? Is that your question, of how does that get down?
Yeah.
So as you can see, what we presented this evening was just kind of the beginnings of that and building our knowledge. And so where we started with building the knowledge of our administrators, and then we'll continue to build that knowledge with all of our teachers as well as our staff. But as Mrs. Arroyo presented as well, our program evaluation process is another piece that really does filter through our diversity and equity pieces, filter through all of those program evaluation pieces, to make sure that we do have the curriculum, the correct materials, and all of those pieces, and that filters in all of the different areas. We just finished the literacy program evaluation, we're starting our world language program evaluation, our social studies program evaluation, and those filter in throughout to build the knowledge base of the teachers on those committees. And then we have different groups in our buildings, where many of our school improvement plans this year have diversity and equity as one of their main goals. And so that's another piece that is really, first of all, building the awareness, deepening the knowledge, and then putting those pieces into practice as we think about, what does that look like? We first need to have the knowledge and then be able to go and put those practices in place so that we have those identity-safe classrooms, just as Dr. Beresford talked about.
Okay, and then the second part of that was, how are we going to go about hiring a diverse staff?
So with that...
Because I know, my husband used to be at the high school, and he had, there were very many, very few black teachers at the high school. One great one in the English department, who was very well-liked, but we don't have very many. And black is not just the only diversity that we would be seeking, but...
Absolutely. We have to make that a priority by having conversations, by starting with the top and stating the expectations, and looking for those teachers who reflect our student body. And so we are already having those conversations with our principals, because our principals do lead those hiring efforts in their buildings. I was very fortunate that we just hired an HR assistant in the HR department when we had an opening, and I was able to fill that with someone with a diverse background, and we're very happy that we are bringing her on board. And so I think it starts with us, it starts with the leadership, it starts by having those conversations, but then we have to take it a next step by where are we going to find those diverse candidates? What schools of education coming out produce some of the finest candidates with diverse backgrounds? And so it is a process. I came from a diverse district where I was part of this work and was very successfully a part of this work in growing that percentage of hiring diverse teachers every single year. And so we have to make a commitment in the district with our leadership to find and search and bring outstanding candidates to Carmel Clay Schools.
Very good, thank you. Also, we talked about, there were 20 clubs at the high school that showed diversity. Can you give me any examples of names of some of those clubs?
So Black Student Union is one of those. We also have two new clubs focused on girls and women. We also have some that have religious affiliations as well. We also have Tea Time, which is for transgendered students.
Okay, very great. The parent panel. Do we have anybody who volunteers to be on the parent panel who does not speak English? Are we encouraging people to be on the panel? And if we do, do we offer translators?
Yeah, our parent panel was a group invited in. It wasn't an ongoing program, but we actually had some people who spoke multiple languages on the panel itself, but...
But we didn't have anyone who specifically did not speak English on that group.
Okay, thank you. And the equity team that's at each school, how will those people be chosen?
I can speak to that a little bit, Pam. Whenever we do any kind of committee work, we work through the CTA with that. And so, like the group that Allison talked about, the advisory council, the CTA worked in cooperation with a lot of collaboration there. We were able to identify who would be good people for that group and be similar to that. Some schools have a group already formed, others are in different, you know, stages of that, so...
Are there specific requirements to be on that team?
Not that I know of. I don't remember seeing any criteria about that.
Okay. And along with the diversity, equity and inclusion, do we invite speakers to come in who have firsthand experiences? Like immigrants, immigration, people who have firsthand knowledge of what it's like to grow up in their country and why they're coming to the United States? And a lot of people in the United States don't understand why an immigrant comes to this country. And what it's like to grow up being black. I, as a white person, have no idea what that's like. I know what I observed, but firsthand experiences. I mean, I think sometimes we think we know what's going on on the other side and we think we have an idea, but we need more education.
And that was really well said. One of the coolest things that I've experienced since, especially this year, was in both the leadership group and also in the advisory group. I was actually, I was invited to do a little introduction there. And both meetings, they went around the circle and said, you know, what's your why? You know, why do you want to be in this group? And the stories around that circle were just amazing. And it's, a lot of them are very personal. But it was really about what you, exactly what you said, about people being very open and transparent about what they know, what they didn't know, and how they felt. And a lot of the backgrounds are very diverse from people that grew up in a lot of different backgrounds. And when you think about a teaching staff, the backgrounds are amazingly diverse. So I think we do have some of that as far as bringing speakers in to speak and that sort of thing. I think it's happened kind of haphazardly. You know, one of the things you saw when we talked about a lot of the history of the work is there's a lot of really good things going on in all different places. But, you know, the challenge of being in a big district is bringing that to scale so we have consistency and equitable opportunities all through the district. So, and that's a big part of the work that we've got ahead of us as to how do we bring it to scale? And in this work and in a lot of things we do, you know, bringing it so that we have, you know, it doesn't matter what school you go to, you know, this is, you know, what's going to happen.
Thank you. I appreciate all the answers.
Lynn?
I don't have questions. I just have some comments here. And first of all, I really appreciate today's presentation to share our ongoing effort actions in the DEI process. I know it's a difficult process. I know from my own experience, the process asks you to self-reflect on your own racism and biases, take actions, you know, so it's not an easy process. I like what you shared that we need a systemic solution for a systemic problem and we are taking a multi-layered approach. I have some comments here based on the presentation. So Dr. Dudley said at the beginning that when you view the leadership capacity for the culturally diverse school or district is to become aware of the multiple dimensions of diversity. So tonight's presentation is mostly focusing on recognizing the diversity through the lens of race and culture. I want to stress that there are multiple layers, multiple dimensions to that. And in the education, from the education perspective, one of the, from the instructor perspective, one of the diversity and inclusion issues here is the different levels of learning abilities. And teachers and kids should know that it's wrong to laugh at others in terms of their skin colors, their accent or culture. It's also wrong to laugh at others when someone cannot solve the problems in class. It's just as serious as you are looking at those protected classes. So that's one of the comments here. I'm sure we are doing more than that, but just from today's presentation, you talk more on culture, on race, and then not much on touching other dimensions of diversity. So we talked about a lot tonight, and one of the words I haven't heard is microaggression. I would say it's, we have very few discrimination or harassment issues or cases because of disciplinary consequences. But microaggressions, that's what we see quite often in classrooms, in cafeteria and at playground. They are less, they are subtle, they are less intentional or they are unintentional. But that's what really hurt people's feelings and hinder people's learning process. For example, let's say at high school, a teacher is asking students to do group projects. And then some kids would just say, some students would just say, we don't want this girl or boy because of something. And that is the microaggression that is hindering hurting students' learning. So I think that that's something we really have to take actions to address on top of those, you know, diversity inclusion issues. Another comment here is that I think that ultimate purpose of, the ultimate goal of our DEI efforts is to, that leadership and that teachers eventually to pass on the knowledge to our students and let them become aware and be empowered to take actions regarding DEI. So I hope that in future presentations, we can share more about what we are doing to let our students be aware, you know, get aware of those issues and their actions. So these are just some of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Mike on the phone, do you have any comments to share?
Hi, I just want to thank all the presenters and remind everybody that we always talk about that diversity is our strength. And as Dr. Beresford always says, we are all better together. So thank you for all your efforts and I look forward to hearing more about them.
Thank you. And then I just have a few. One of the things we talked a lot about administrative panels, parents, teachers. Is there anything in the works with students? Getting that student voice into some of these things?
Yeah, there is. We really wanted to make sure that, you know, we had the teacher's voice and had a, you know, a space where they could work together. Because really that, from an instructional side of it, that, you know, they're the key players. They're the ones that, everything we do in the district is about that moment of contact with teachers and students. But I have spoke with several different students. And I think that'll be kind of the next two pieces to put together is more robust parent involvement and student involvement. So I think those are in the works, but there's not anything specific set up right now.
Thank you. And then just kind of some closing thoughts I wanted to share. One of the things that was so impressive of me is when I joined the board is Carmel Clay Schools guiding principles. I know that, I believe it was 2015, I think it was, around that time, where the board put forth 11 statements that we believe are essential to our school district. And I can tell you that those statements are something that we use each and every decision that we have. And I just want to share with you the first three. First one is students are the center of every decision. A safe, non-threatening learning environment is essential. And the third is students' academic, social, emotional and physical needs must be addressed. I think it is so important as we have these conversations, they're not easy conversations to have, but to realize that we do have a problem in some areas, that we do need to be better in some areas, in a lot of areas, and to work together. I'm so thankful as a district that we are taking the time to acknowledge these things and to work together to be able to bring a better future. Because there are 16,000 students and more to come that depend on us. So thank you so much for your hard work, for everyone who's continuing to work with on this charge. I just kind of, now we'll turn it over to Dr. Beresford for a superintendent's report.
Thank you. And really, I do want to just give a shout out. Can we give a hand to all the people that presented tonight? They did a really, really fine job. I work with so many smart people, it's really intimidating. I did want to share with, I'll try to make it a quick report, but there's a lot of cool stuff going on in Carmel Clay Schools right now. And I'll start with last Friday night. I got to trek over to Brownsburg High School. And the Hounds football team won an exciting game on the road. They captured their eighth straight win for the season, their eighth straight sectional title. And the next trip is going to the West Side to play the regional championship game against the Ben Davis Giants. So Friday Night Lights will be going on. This team is special and it's, they've had injuries. They've had a lot of different players stepping up on both sides of the ball. And they just, they're a great group and they're determined to get the job done and take it to the next level. So I'm real proud of that group. On the other end, we had our very first girls' basketball game at Carmel High School. And they took on number two Homestead and they dominated that game. They won 66 to 32. So what a way to start off the year at a really high level. Moving on from there, I was sent a link to the Carmel Middle School Choir Concert. And they did a virtual choir concert and it was just amazing. And they had social distance in the gym and they recorded it and did video. And I thought they were just a great example of, instead of focusing on what you can't do because of COVID, well, what can we do? And I sent that, I know Pam and a lot of the board members got to see that. They really did a nice job with that. And I love what they did to find a way to share their talents with all of us. Along with that, I'm looking forward on Thursday night to attending the Radio Mystery Theater in a very socially-distanced auditorium at Carmel High School. I don't know if there'll be like 11 of us in there or how that's going to play out. But it's a big room, so hopefully we'll get a few people in there. But again, it's, I love so many of our staff and students that are taking the environment, but they're working within the rules and then trying to, you know, be creative about letting kids do what they love to do. And I really appreciate that. Onto some other things that aren't nearly as much fun but necessary as redistricting. And I had the opportunity to attend the second redistricting community meeting last week. Several parents spoke on different topics. And those topics kind of emerged into themes. And I'm sure they'll be considered as the progress moves forward. They're currently evaluating about 3,000 different submissions of feedback on the three plans that were posted. And then again, what they do is they take those, all those suggestions and they create themes out of those. And then they'll take those, that feedback and they'll take those three plans and then craft them and then build them into one plan. And so Mr. McMichael was pretty optimistic that a lot of the concerns that parents had and then feedback's been shared will be able to solve some of those. It'll be impossible to make a plan that make everyone happy. But the effort to make it work and to be efficient across the district so that our kids can have a, you know, a better environment to live in and work in will be great. I'm really grateful to the thousands of people who have engaged in the process. And I think it's been, as far as processes go, it's been done very well. So let's go into COVID-19. And I know that a lot of us have a lot of fatigue about that, but we have to keep going. And so Friday, I sent out a video asking people to reframe from gathering in big groups, which I know is a tough one, especially for students. But, and also to follow the safety precautions because we saw a surge of positive cases last week. And I think both inside and outside of our schools, you know, we really have to start focusing back on our fundamentals. I think we're getting away from them. We gotta, we gotta wear our masks and wear them right. We have to do our social distancing to the greatest degree possible. We need to wash our hands. We talked about standing side by side instead of face to face. So that, you know, that's what medical professionals do when they have sick patients in their offices. And we've gotten a lot of really good fundamentals and we've learned a lot through this. But, and by doing those fundamentals, you know, especially using our COVID screener, every morning, asking those four questions before you come to school and making sure that if you're not feeling well, stay home. That's going to be, you know, the best way that we can fight the spread and keep our schools open. Now, as you all can imagine, I'm getting a whole lot of advice right now. You know, with the surge in Indiana and in the nation, really. And I'm getting, you know, advice from every side about every viewpoint and, you know, on this, on anything COVID these days. But I want everybody just to please know, we're continuing to look at the, to the medical community, you know, to give us our guidance. And we're conferring with the Hamlin County Health Department almost daily. And we're, you know, we are doing everything that we can to follow the rules and stop the spread and also, you know, educate our kids at the highest level we can. I also want you to know that we're working on contingencies. Because if this trend continues, we can't be naive and think, well, you know, it's just going to go away because it could get worse. And we are working on contingencies if we're faced with pivoting a grade level or a school to go on 100% virtual for two weeks. You know, we're making those plans and are preparing for that as well. Because we really continue in this environment to not know what's going to happen next. So we have to kind of prepare for the unknown. So we're working on contingencies to do that. And I want to kind of share, what are we talking about when we say that? Well, there's a lot of factors that could put us in a position where we may have to do something like that. One would be a concentrated number of positive cases in one school. Now, we really haven't seen that yet, but that could be something that could happen. An extremely high number of quarantines. And the quarantine contact tracing, we have, the people that are doing that work and working the COVID hotline are really putting in the hours. And our school administrators as well, whenever there's a positive case, just one, it takes a long time to contact trace all that. And, but that is helping stop the spread. But if we had a high number of, you know, where a really high number of kids were out on quarantine, you know, that could be, put us in a position where we might have to pivot. A high number of staff cases, we're not seeing a lot of those right now, I'm knocking on wood. Or a high number of teachers or other staff members being quarantined, like for instance, bus drivers. There's a lot of things that we need to have happen to operate. Right now, we're extremely short on substitute teachers. So if you have 30 hours of college work, Dr. O'Stryke will sign you up right now before you get out the door. But we really do need substitutes. And because we'd love to get some more people on our sub-list and that, again, could assist us in, you know, keeping our schools open. So as of right now, we have 11 days to go until our Thanksgiving break. So 11 days. So, and then after Thanksgiving break, we have 15 school days until we get to Christmas break. So I know I've been saying over and over again, but let's just sustain the effort and let's get back to our fundamentals. And let's do everything we can do to, more, most importantly, stop the spread. And then secondly, you know, keep ourselves in school, keep our school going. And just a couple more here. QPR. I want to let parents know that there's going to be a QPR webinar training on December 1st. Now, QPR stands for Question, Persuade and Respond. And it's a suicide prevention program. So much like when people learn CPR so that you can help someone who has a heart attack and keep them alive until help arrives, very much like that. QPR is a life-saving measure to connect people with the help they need when they are contemplating suicide. So you can respond and help someone who might be thinking of hurting themselves in one way or another. So it's a really good trainer and encourage everyone, you know, to go through that training. It's not difficult and it's, you could save a life. As you guys know, each November 1st, I challenge the male staff in the district to participate in Nose Shave November. And I will just say, this is what it looks like right now. My wife doesn't particularly like it, but that's the way it goes. But anyhow, I challenge them to grow a mustache or a beard. And the idea to do that is to bring a... bring attention to men's mental health, and because really, we want not just guys, but everyone to know it's okay not to be okay, and there's help available. But especially to the guys, we want you to know that it is strong and caring to reach out when you're struggling, and so that it's okay to reach out and get that help that you need. A little shout out, I wanted to give a shout out to the nine candidates who ran for the school board. You know, it takes a special person to be willing to devote four years of your lives, of your life, to the service of the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools, and so I'm talking to the choir up here for sure. And some of them have, how many years is it now, Pam?
Eleven.
Eleven, and so, you know, no, it's more than that.
No, it's, well, I get an extra half year because of the COVID. I'm in my third term.
Third term, so a third term adds up to like 12, 13 years is a long time. So, but anyhow, I want to do, I know that the election is not certified, so I don't want to, you know, break any rules, but currently, I want to congratulate Katie Browning and Louise Jackson, who's with us tonight as our large candidates, for the next four years, four more years. So anyhow, I really do, anyone that takes on, you know, that campaign is all right in my book because of the dedication to our kids and family. So finally, the bell ringer, and you guys are probably wondering what's left, but I've made no apologies ever, in my belief that cross-country is the greatest sport on the planet. There is not a better sport in the world than cross-country. And, you know, last weekend, or excuse me, on Halloween, on the 31st, our boys' cross-country team ran in a crazy good race, and they are the 2020 state runners-up. And they were led by sophomore Cole Matisson, who placed third, and I believe the boys' team had three all-state runners, which is crazy, amazing. And what was really crazy amazing, they had three all-state runners and got second. And what that tells you is that there were two extraordinary teams in the state this year competing, and they were, they just, it was an amazing competition. We came up a little short, but it was, it was just an amazing fight between those two teams, so congratulations to the boys on an amazing season. But your girls' Carmel High School cross-country team, and I will point out that Alice Martin is one of the coaches on the cross-country team, are your 2020 state champions. Go ahead and clap, because it is the greatest sport. Now, they were led by senior Annie Christie's third-place finish, and their team dominated, they absolutely dominated, they scored 52 points, which I know some of you probably aren't, you know, up to speed on cross-country, but the lowest scorer wins. So to score 52 points, the next best team was like 77, it was, that is like destroying the competition, destroying the state. And so these ladies worked very hard. I think I had the stats right, that 12 different runners competed for the Greyhounds throughout the tournament, so like from the sectional to the state, 12 different runners ran in different times during that race. It really was a major team effort. And I'll close it with this, the race is run at the Laverne Gibson National Cross Country Course. This is where state and national championship races are run for high school and college, and these girls dominated all the other teams, but I will tell you that they also dominated the Laverne, and the Laverne is a wicked hard cross-country course, and they just, they just took that course and flattened it, and it is not a flat course, so it was incredible to watch them compete. So my bell ringer is, how about those lady hounds, 2020 state champions, and the greatest sport on the planet? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearsford. Thank you so much for those who are attending in person, who are watching the recording later, thank you for always supporting our students. We have two upcoming meetings for the 2020 year, thank goodness. The school board regular session will be on November 23rd, and on December 14th, we will have our last meeting as a regular session. There is no workshop session in December. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second? All those in favor? Aye? Meeting adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.